Create public assets like those two things, yet we don't make it work well for regular people. And communities like Mira Mesa experience that when you see. And then with regard to housing affordability, as I shared with you a moment ago, my parents, the maid and the gardener, were able to work hard and buy a home in San Diego. They were able to do that about 30 years ago in our city. I think many of us recognize that's nearly impossible for people with similar professions to do today. And I think that the next mayor of San Diego should work every single day to make sure that those who work hard and play by the rules have a place for themselves here in San Diego. And so I appreciate you letting me share a little bit about my background and about my vision for our city. I am proud to have the endorsement of our city's firefighters, lifeguards, police officers, teachers, nurses. I think that we've built a big and broad coalition that will take these goals that I have of being a city that ends chronic homelessness and being a city that builds a world-class transportation system. And a city that builds housing that is affordable to working and middle-class people aren't just ideas, but are things that we can actually implement. And again, Bari, thank you for letting me share a few of these thoughts with your group this evening. I look forward to hopefully coming back with you all many, many times, hopefully in person and most definitely as your next mayor.
Very glad to have you here tonight. We have time if we have a couple of questions in chat. We can only do a handful if you're interested in taking a few of those.
I'd be delighted to, and in fact, I'm happy to stay a little longer and answer questions in the chat too, just while you, in respect for your time, Bari.
Thank you. So if anyone has a question, go ahead and pop in right now. We have a lot on the agenda tonight. We want to make sure you get your question answered.
We'll need to unmute yourself if you have a question.
I see a question from Terry. It says, what is your plan for Balboa Park? Terry, thank you for that question. Many of you may know that when I served on the city council, I represented.
I'm sorry, Todd, but I think I.
You got muted, Todd. We can't hear you. I'm sure it's a great answer. I have no idea what you said.
Mute yourself, please, Todd.
I think we're all good. I think you all are now muted. Now I'm not. Okay, fantastic. So when I was on this city council, I represented Balboa Park. I worked with then-mayor Jerry Sanders to create the Balboa Park Conservancy. And this was intended to try and be a private sector partner with the city to invite the philanthropy that people are so willing to support the park, to use that as a force multiplier to make improvements in the park. As your state assembly member, I was able to secure $8 million in the last state budget to fund rehabilitation and restoration of the botanical building in Balboa Park. The Conservancy is now raising the funds to match that commitment to restore that building to its 1915 condition. This is currently a pilot project, but this should be how we do business going forward. We're taking public resources, marrying it with private sector resources, and making sure that our park remains world-class and spectacular for the benefit of certainly locals, but also for tourists. I think there's going to be actually a big announcement in the park this Friday that I'm looking forward to being a part of. It would be the next step in this, and I want to just make two commitments to you. We will not privatize the park. Be very, very clear, the park is and always will be an asset to the people of this city. And number two, we will not commercialize the park. There will be no McDonald's in the park. There will be no Coca-Cola banners off the California Tower. But what we're going to do is take the love that people have for our park. If I asked you all right now to raise your hands if you love Balboa Park, go ahead and do it. Do you all love Balboa Park? Every hand goes up. Second question, would you be willing to contribute directly to help improve the park? Show of hands. How many of y'all would write that check to the city of San Diego? Exactly. This is where the Conservancy becomes so helpful. By working with a private nonprofits partner that can give, with tax-exempt status, we can harness that love of the park, that willingness to help, and actually get more stuff done for the park. And Terry asked, no paid parking? Yeah, I know, we, there was an effort to do that. That is not happening any longer. And I think actually, my suggestion for additional parking would be a better management of the existing assets that are there. For example, Balboa Park, Balboa Way or Drive, I'm sorry, on the west side of the park, you know, it's the road that parallels Sixth Avenue. You know, that is a three-lane wide road in the middle of our park. What I would suggest is going to angled parking or perhaps head-in parking on that street. I believe you would net hundreds of additional parking spaces for the cost of a can of paint. And those additional parking spaces would go a long way to supporting visitors who want to come to the park as well as the institutions that are there. And that's important to do as we slowly reclaim portions of the park for parkland. I think, I hope that many of you like what's happened in the Plaza de Panama, where we removed a couple dozen parking spaces and returned that space to the public. If any of you've been there for Food Truck Fridays, that was one of the best ideas I had as a city council member. I encourage you, if you haven't, well, I guess we can't do it right now during COVID, but when we can do it again, if you can see the thousands of San Diegans that are there at night in the park enjoying all that's there in a free event, you can see why taking away those parking spaces was the right thing to do. And I think the wisest thing to do is to be to offset those in other places in the park where we can get some more spaces.
One more in here. Barry asked, what do you, what do you have, ideas you have for addressing the backlog of street repairs?
Yeah, Barry, thank you. Yeah, you know, and let me be really clear. I'm well aware of the fact that Mira Mesa's roads are not decode. You know, I recognize that a lot of people might suggest, well, they're north of the 8th, they're north of the 52, their roads are fine. The truth of the matter is, roads in every neighborhood in the city need a lot of help. And Barry, to your question, I would ask you all to consider that the state of California, a little more than a year ago, doubled the amount of funding that we send to cities like San Diego for road repair. And a recent report by KPBS and iNews Source showed that the city is actually not utilizing a lot of that money. So my answer to you, Barry, is to simply make use of the funds that we already have. Funds that are coming from the state that are intended for road repair, but are not being utilized. I think that lack of utilization is a reflection of the poor management that is currently at City Hall. And I would hope to bring better management to, again, use the resources that we currently have to make sure that there are more road improvements. The second thing, and this will be where I end it, is, you know, we recently changed state law. We passed a bill, AB 805, that puts the mayor of San Diego in charge at Sandag. Many of you know that we have a one-cent sales tax in our county to fund transportation improvements in our county. Our current mayor does not use that authority to run Sandag under AB 805. Instead, he's given that authority to the mayor of Poway. I think that's a mistake. I think that the mayor of San Diego should be in a leadership position at Sandag in order to ensure that we get a fair share of that one-cent sales tax in our community. And by doing so, a good chunk of that money also can go to road repair in our city. So I think this is a key issue in our city, but it's one of the ones where, for which I think the solutions are pretty evident and pretty, and able to be effectuated relatively quickly. And I hope to be able to do that as your mayor.
Excellent. Thank you so much for being here tonight and taking these questions, letting us know your thoughts on the city and on some projects in Mira Mesa. We hope to hear from you again soon.
Will do, and I'll hang out in the chat for anyone else. I see a couple more questions came in, so I'll answer those. Anyone else wants to shoot some at me, go ahead. And again, thank you so much for your time this evening. I truly appreciate you.
All right, we're going to move on to our school segment. October is traditionally our school's night, and we are very, very proud to show off the schools in Mira Mesa. They are among the best, and they are among the ones that keep more students from their neighborhoods going to their neighborhood schools than any other area in San Diego. There is a reason for that. So I'm going to turn over direction of the meeting to Jeff and to Pam. Pam is going to do the introductions of all of our principals. Jeff is going to help keep order and take questions as they come in. If we have the time, we can have some specific questions for individual principals. If not, those questions will be handled by Jeff after the last of our principals makes their presentation. So Jeff, Pam?
Okay, well, I'll speak up. I love being able to do this because I've lived in Mira Mesa since 1980. Both our daughters went all the way through Mira Mesa schools, starting at Mason Elementary School. Sauk Elementary is the one that's the very closest to our house. When our older daughter was two years old and we moved here, we were told, oh, sure, by the time she starts kindergarten, there's going to be a school on that side. Well, many years later, Sauk became our newest elementary school. But the schools that were built in the early 70s had a fascinating history. And I won't take time away from the principals tonight, but I loved researching that for my book about Mira Mesa. It's really true. In many ways, Mira Mesa is the history of its schools. And the present day, the communities gather around their schools. We are parents and children and grandparents, and it's a lot of fun. The principals have organized an order of speaking, and we have some slides to put up that Jeff's going to put up that will go along with their talks. The first principal that I'm going to be calling up, we're going to take the order of elementary school, middle school, high school for the public schools. And then we have Good Shepherd and Christ the Cornerstone that we'll take at the end. So elementary school.
I'm going to go ahead and start this slideshow. I've written that the teachers who have done this well-organized presentation will tell me whenever I need to change a slide. And now we will see if this works. Hang on a minute.
It says Jeff has started screen sharing.
I tried, but that wasn't the right one. Hang on a minute here. Make sure I have the right.
Jeff has started screen sharing.
Yes, I see it. How about the rest of you?
We can see.
We can see it. Okay.
Jeff, if you mind tapping the top right corner where it says Present. There's a button. It's right next to the big yellow button. There you go. And then I know our team member, my name is Toby Pace, but we put this slideshow together for our 10 public elementary schools and middle school and high school. And then like Pam said, we're going to move into the next one. But as you can see from this opening page, we are a community, and we wanted to come and present this in a new format that we wish we could see you all in person. But we are here tonight virtually with you to give you a virtual hug from our community school. So if you could click the next slide, Jeff. One of the things we want to talk about is Pam highlighted this is the beauty that we belong in Mira Mesa. And that's something we feel so strongly about as principals and as community members in Mira Mesa, that any school that you go to in our amazing Mira Mesa community, that all of our children belong. In a moment, each one of us are going to share some highlights from our own specific site. But most importantly, that we're just so honored to be a part of the Mira Mesa community. So over to, I believe, Darius is our first one. If you can hit return.
Good evening. I hope that you can hear me. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Terrific. I am so honored to be here this evening. This is my eighth year as an administrator in Mira Mesa. I love working in Mira Mesa. My first four years was under the excellent leadership of Dr. Fallon at Wagenheim Middle School as I served as the vice principal. And this will be my fourth year at Erickson Elementary. So just a little bit about Erickson Elementary. Our quick school overview, we have the enrollment this year of 714 students. I'm really happy to say that our projected allocations and enrollment did not go down. So that's a great thing for us, given the circumstances that we're starting with online learning and some of the crises we've faced as a community and as a nation with the pandemic. Again, my name is Darius Ashton. I'm the principal at Erickson Elementary. I have an awesome vice principal that I share between Erickson and Longfellow. Eric, if you want to just say hello, you don't have to give a speech, but I just want you to know if you see him around. Is this familiar? He's with us. Eric Wilson, are you there?
Yeah, hello, everybody.
The ongoing conversation is that we have an Eric Wilson and an Eric Sullivan. So we have two Eric's with us now this year. And I'm so happy to have him join us as our vice principal. Some, some nice things about Erickson, if you don't know, we have an early childhood special education program. So we have two full classrooms for early childhood. Those are our younger kids, our three and our four-year-olds with mod to severe special needs. We also are a hub for our two mod severe classes, as well as piloting a full-day early childhood special ed program. That's a new pilot with the district. We have 27 classroom teachers, 33 certificated staff, and about 70 staff overall at our school. So we're a big campus. Also, just another important information about Erickson that I wanted to share is we have about 140 English language learner students, which includes some of the students who have been tested. And we have an additional 47 initial English language learners that have joined our school this year. The majority of our students do all test proficiency levels as they grow through the grades from TK kindergarten through fifth grade. And some highlights about Erickson that I wanted to share is that we are very honored to have such an active community in Mira Mesa. We have a foundation, which is our Friends of Erickson, and we have a PTA. So we have two parent groups that are operating full-time to support our school in being the best it can be for the community. Silly but true fact, we have a new phone number. So if anybody needs to know or wants to write this information down, they changed last year our phone numbers, but it has been many, many years. So if you have the old phone number for Erickson, it will continue to forward for the next couple of months. And then you'll actually have to have the real phone number. We have a running club on our beautiful joint-use field that we use. Some of our students are participating in an excellent ballet program even online at the start of the year this year. We are also engaged in several art programs. Specifically, our third grade is always highlighting arts. That's their, their focus as a grade level. We have a music program for all students, so we're very big into music in addition to fourth and fifth grade Vapa music program. We have a very famous talent show. And if we, hopefully, will be back to school by that time. But if not, we have plans to make it go online this year for our students because of their talent that we want to showcase. We have a campus beautification happening right now at our school site with our Friends of Erickson. So making our campus beautiful is a big focus for us. We've developed sensory paths. We're updating some of the wall ball courts. We're also working right now with a project to make the access to our joint-use field safer and more practical, practical for the community. So if anybody is familiar with our campus on the north side near Classic Kids, we are going to have a single, we're going to have a single pedestrian path right there that will grant you direct access to the field. And you're no longer, no longer have to access the park by going through a very small gated area and through our actually open campus. So it's going to be a lot more safe for our community, or for our campus and also for our community. And of course, are doing a single entry point with some new video cameras to make our school even safer. And what makes Erickson very unique, and we are very proud, we have another school in Mira Mesa, but I won't steal their glory, that we partnered this year. And we were one of very few in the district to be nominated as a California, or recognized as a California distinguished school for the year 2020. Also, we are implementing a full STEAM program in partnership with our district. We have supported our TK and K classes, our first-grade classes. Our second-grade classrooms are all taking that on. It's progressive to go through all of the grade levels. We also offer the seminar program for our cluster. We have really invested a lot of time and effort into online learning. A little bit about my background, when schools closed on March 13th last year. My background before administration was central office educational technology. So we immediately started offering professional developments for all of our staff. So from our certificated and our classified staff, from the day that schools closed, we literally started offering lots of different workshops for them. They were also engaged in many as the rest of the district were this year as we entered the school year. And we have a, what I call, learning on the go, which is a one-to-one device for our third through fifth grade students. They check out their computers just like textbooks. Now, of course, all of our students have computers. And so when we return to brick and mortar to our school site, we're really going to be looking at all students taking computers home from the very early grade levels, from even TK first, second, TKK first and second grade as well. We are also piloting for the district right now a TK four-year-old program, which is very new. We're excited to be hosting that at our school site. And we're also piloting, and I mentioned this briefly earlier, a full-day early childhood special education classroom, which is brand-new for our district. So we're, again, are very proud of the work that we're doing and even more proud to be a part of this wonderful community and the work that we do together. And thank you, Toby, for putting this together for us tonight and the rest of the administrators. There's one thing about Mira Mesa, and it's that we are very unified in our leadership. And so thank you for our opportunity, opportunity to speak this evening.
Looks like the next one would be, let's see, James Lee from Hage.
You got it, Pam. Thank you so much for the quick introduction. I'm James Lee, the principal at Hage Elementary. So great to be here with everybody again via this distance, though. It's tough. I remember telling some stories at previous town council meetings about me dating my wife for the first time right at the library, right outside those doors. I asked her to be my girlfriend, and it worked out. So very fortunate to have that happen, and it's a near and dear place to my heart, for sure. But just a quick overview of our school at Hage Elementary. We're down compared to what Darius had shared earlier. We are down in enrollment right now, and we know that's because of the impacts of COVID-19. And so that's something that we are working very hard to try to counteract and really meet the challenges of serving our students in the best ways possible. We have 68 staff members, 24 genet teachers. And then we have our mod severe program as well. We have two programs. One classroom is a primary and one is upper. We also are welcoming a new shared VP that is shared with Hage as well as Jonas Salk. Her name is Tracy Peralt. She is not here currently, but she is fantastic. And she came from us in a roundabout way from Hickman Elementary. So she's coming back home as well to serve our community. We have some of these students with IEPs, and we have 73 English language learners. We just qualified for Title I this year, so that brings some extra funding to our school, which is really, really nice. And we're a military bus drop-off location. We also have a new phone number. So many of us are getting new phone numbers, so please do program that into your phone and make sure that you have that readily available. We also have a new Twitter account. So in this, in the light of distance and trying to connect with others, this is a path that we as a school decided to take and dip our toes into the waters of social media even further. And that is our Twitter handle, Hage Panthers. So @HagePanthers, please add us on Twitter. We have three new playground equipment structures, which is really fantastic for our school because they have not been replaced since Hage opened in 1990, I don't believe. So that was something that was near, needed, very much so for our campus. And so we're glad to have that done, especially when we're not on campus right now. So that's really been fortunate for us, silver lining in all the things that are going on that we're able to get that construction done and out of the way without having to have students on campus. We started also a weekly storytime with staff where we record us reading stories to students, where parents can watch that at their leisure with their kids. It's another way for us to connect. We also have our district Vapa program for fifth-grade students. But we also are into the Vapa program in regards to funding that. And so our students, when we get back to brick and mortar, will receive visual and performing arts in regards to dance and other visual arts, music as well. We have trained all of our staff in sort of practices, and we have a fantastic, amazing PTA. What makes us unique? We have a really great and dynamic P program, which also highlights our third-through-fifth swim program. We take all of our students, third through fifth grade, over to Miramar College and take them there for six weeks of free swim lessons, pretty dynamic and fantastic. We have a whole-school dance fitness. And then we also have an integrated club move, which is our AP students with our genet students, another fantastic program that was launched on our school site. We have a motor lab and sensory room. We have daily counseling and guidance support. We've been a mule distribution site as well as walker during online learning. And we have a part-time resource teacher that was funded through that Title I funding that we were able to get. And so we have that teacher supporting English language arts and mathematics. Now I'm going to kick it on over to Toby Pace over at Hickman.
All right. Well, hello again. My name is Toby Pace. I've been the principal over at Hickman for six years now and just honored and thrilled to be a part of the amazing Mira Mesa community. At the bottom of the screen, you can see our mural. This is actually on the front of our school we put in about three years ago. And it has our mission statement. As you can see, there's four important words that we as Hickman community believe in in our blue and gold for all of Mira Mesa. It's live, learn, lead together. And these four words have really guided us in everything we do, everything we say. We believe that, you know, especially now more than ever, we have come together as a Hickman family with the distance learning. All of our teachers are in living rooms of our families. And we just really have that homeschool connection that we are all living, we're all learning, we're all leaders. We believe in that strongly and that ultimately, we're in this together. And we've really guided everything we do based on this principle and these four words. So our school overview, like I shared, we are the smallest public school. We have 400 and, actually, we have 449 students. And we have 18 different classrooms, TK through fifth grade. We have 29 different staff members. 49 of our students have specialized academic instruction with an IEP. 55 of our students are English language learners. And one of the things we always celebrate is we have 27 different languages spoken in Hickman. So we really embrace the diversity of all of our students and really strive to communicate with our families this year. Specifically, we are a school-wide class dojo community, which means all of our families, kind of like Facebook, but you can go through and scroll. Every single family is connected on our class dojo, so that I can post daily news for the school. But the great thing about class dojo is it translates to any language. So it's fun for me as an administrator to be able to see all the families that are reading the messages daily and seeing pictures of their at-home learning right now, which hopefully will get to a different place in the future with COVID. But right now, we're in that space, and so we're really trying to continue to celebrate that. Again, along with many of my colleagues, our district has invested in not just the new number, but behind that is a whole upgrade to our system, for all of our systems. So we were basically on the old school phones. It wasn't the rotary phones, but the old school phones where, you know, you pick up, there was no caller IDs. So over the last year, several of our schools, as you've seen, have been updated with the entire system so that we actually can get voicemails. I can, it's actually a blessing in disguise because now we're able to get school voicemails at home through email and all of those things. So as well as other, the other couple of schools, our, our school number has changed as well. Another thing that I really like to celebrate is our strong parent partnership. We have, we used to have two separate, we had a PTA, and we also had a foundation. But we've combined those over the last three years to the NEST, we call it, the HAWC Nest, which stands for nurturing and enriching students together. So that ongoing collaboration that our parents really partner with us to support our students. And thanks to our amazing NEST, our parent organization, we also have the amazing music for all students. Every child gets 30 minutes, TK through fifth grade, of music instruction from Lorelei Gardner, who's an amazing musician and music teacher. We also, through the NEST parent funding, we receive weekly instruction in art from Leo Angelo. And if any of you have driven up and down Mira Mesa Boulevard, all of those power boxes, he's actually was the one who started painting those boxes. He's now our art teacher. So all of our kids, even with distance learning, are receiving specific art instruction at their grade level. And we're excited to continue that program because we want those well-rounded children in all the areas. And obviously, we continue to focus in on ELA, which is English Language Arts, so our reading and writing and arithmetic, as they say. Those are always our core values as we provide instruction for all students. So we're working hard on that. Oh, we're back to Hage. Let's go to Hickman. Benchmark is something our district has adopted, and we're excited that we have a, a new curriculum basically for TK through fifth grade and through the district as well, but we're really embracing that. Lastly, what makes us unique? This is our fourth year as a leader in me school. And as I've shared before at past town councils, we're thrilled to be a part of Stephen Covey's Seven Habits of Highly Effective People. And really, the philosophy blended with schools a couple decades ago, where we realized each one of us has leadership skills in all of us. And so we train all the way from our four-year-olds in TK all the way through to our staff, our custodian, and our lunch lady. As we talk about the leadership qualities in each one of us. And our job as teachers, that we are leaders. I'm the principal. I'm a leader. You're a leader. Parents are leaders. Each one of us can find our leadership voice, and that is our ultimate goal. That when children leave us, from going from TK all the way through fifth grade and off to the middle school world, that they know and they've found their voice as leaders. We are also on our second year of a No Place for Hate school, where we really strive to teach anti-racism policies and really. teach anti-racism policies and really embrace our diverse school and all the ethnicities, races, religions that we have. So really excited about continuing that. And like I shared in the beginning, we are the smallest public school in Miramasa. So excited for another year of Hickman Elementary. Off to my next colleague.
Thank you Toby. Hi everyone, I'm Deidra Hartson. I'm the principal at Jonas Salk Elementary School. We opened Jonas Salk in 2015. So we are in our year six. And Jonas Salk is where dreams begin. And a lot of people probably don't know this, but where that came from was from the Salk Institute and that is where cures begin. And so we kind of added that to our school so that we could keep Jonas Salk's name alive. I've been, I grew up in Miramasa. I have, I graduated from Miramasa High School and I was really surprised to learn Pam that I've actually lived in Miramasa longer than you. And I won't tell you guys how long because that ages me. I have been in education for 37 years. I guess I've aged myself right there. So we know that I'm older than 37. And I've actually worked at Challenger, Wagenheim, Mason and Jonas Salk. So Miramasa is home for me. I love Miramasa and it's, I live and breathe blue and gold. Our enrollment at Jonas Salk is 690 students. We have 132 English learners. 70 students have IEPs and we have an amazing, amazing group of students and families that we serve. As as my colleague James shared, we share a VP by the name of Tracy and she comes from Hickman. We have 44 certificated staff members and 30 classified staff members on our site. And one in five of our teachers and staff, well, one in five of our staff members are actually Miramasians. Meaning that they're marauders and they live in Miramasa. So one of the rumors they always had is that once you grow up in Miramasa, you keep coming back and that's actually the truth. We keep coming back to the marauders. Some of the highlights about our school is that we were like Erickson, a distinguished school last year. We have our, we have den meetings because we're the Lions and the assemblies are completely planned and run by our PCC members and our honorary principal. Teaming is an integral part of our work. We have art, music, and we also do a lot of content area teaming. We have a strong character education program and we support a restorative approach in dealing with children. We are, we have really high standards and at the same time, we recognize the importance of a STEAM program. We are science is taught daily at Jonas Salk Elementary School, which is rare for elementary. We're a project lead the way school, so, and that is made possible by our amazing PTA. We don't have a foundation as of yet. We have specialists that teach math and science because we do, like I said, everyone at our school is in some sort of teaming model. Our students are grouped by college and so that's how we refer to our students as opposed to the teacher's name. We refer to them as Stanford or UCSD or UCLA. And that's how we are able to move kids around in our departmentalization colleges. Our, we are, we were the first elementary school to be a logo school in San Diego Unified because we were brand new. And so all of our students immediately began taking their computers home from our inception. We use, we are, one of the schools that uses Schoology. And we have a strong Lions Den in our Google sites that supports our families in navigating through our online learning program. And last, not least, we are still after six years waiting for our joint use space for our kids to be able to play. And so I'm hoping Pam and your hubby there are going to have some fantastic news for us sometime soon. Thank you so much. And I'd like to introduce my former school, Mason.
Thank you Deidra. Good evening, everybody. My name's Jessie Harrison and I have the privilege to be the principal at Mason Elementary. This is my third year leading Mason towards excellence and it is an absolutely amazing place to be. We have grown in numbers, so we are at about 530 students. We've added two additional teaching spots this year and we've hired a total of four teachers. So we are having a little bit of excitement with bigger grade levels, with more minds to plan grade instruction for our students. We have 55 staff members. We have 60 students who have IEPs and we have 160 English language learners. We are thrilled to have over 30 languages spoken at Mason and we embrace all of our students with a great big smile and welcome them on the campus when we're there in person, as well as when we're online in our daily Zoom meetings. A few highlights of Mason is we have the Sage Gardening Grant that we continually are awarded. With that is a professional expert who teaches gardening to our students. So our students have a chance to plant, reseed, they're able to create meals from everything that they have grown. It has been an amazing program. Again, or as well, Mason has that phone and internet upgrade. It has been great. Today I tried it out, called the main line. I was able to have a menu to direct me to where I wanted to go. Hung up before my clerk answered and she called me right back because on her email at home, it said that I called her. She was worried. I expected her to be at school today. I said, oh no, I'm just testing out the system. So the new phones are great. We're fortunate to serve a large population of our families who reside at Miramar. They bring such joy and wide ranges of stories and experiences to all of our students at Mason. And we have bilingual staff in our front office. So this year we are able to have two Spanish, English-speaking staff members, which has really helped us communicate with our families who do not speak English and to be able to get them online. For this year, we have a solar project, so Mason will be getting solar panels right up against the mixed-use field or the joint-use field. So hopefully that solar will be coming. And we are also in the middle of a single-point entry fence and cameras. So this year, just like Erickson, Darius shared, we will be working on a single-point entry as well as cameras to make sure our campus is even safer. One of the most exciting things this year is the TK4 classroom. I think Erickson also has the same program where we have two teachers and 24 students. And these are three-year-olds and four-year-olds and some are turning five. And it's that hope that we can continue, start early learning and continue our students on a successful school environment. This year, we have used our Title I funds to purchase extra days for our counselors. So we have a school counselor for four days a week instead of one and a half days, which is our district allotment. We also are really excited, I'm getting a little dizzy here with the screen going back and forth. We are really excited to work with Mr. Chad again. He's our MFLAC, our Military Family Liaison Counselor. So we have a full-time counselor who's dedicated to supporting our family, our military families. We are launching our TK3 Implementation of STEAM. Our teachers have attended training during the summer. I have more lay-in and different materials than you can dream of, waiting to go out into classrooms. And we will continue on with our training. In addition, Mason was also provided mathematical tutors. So all of our 3rd graders will have mathematical tutors from San Diego State virtually and then in person if we can get to that point soon. And then we just have amazing learning community. I am just so thankful to see all of our Mason Lions coming onto campus and to see them when we pop into Zooms, as well as when we have our material pickup and distribution days. We can't have a great school without our community. So we're really thankful for that. And when we all need a breath and something beautiful, we head on out to the garden, the orchard. We have plenty of mature orchard trees in the back corner, which bring great joy, exploration and learning for our students. Thank you all. Turn it on over to whoever is next.
Next we have, let's see. Sandberg, is that right?
Yes. So it's great to be here. My name's Lindsay Bredingham. I'm the new principal at Sandberg. I got to join Sandberg the week before school started. So it was a quick transition, but it's been an exciting transition. And just before I talk about Sandberg, since I haven't met all of you before, a little bit about me. I've been in San Diego Unified for 17 years and a little fun fact is that Deidra Hartson was my first principal many, many years ago. And was, I think that I fault her with bringing me into this amazing new profession and helping me along this journey. So she was my first principal. She already aged herself, so I thought I could share that. And I also am a mom of a wonderful little three-year-old who's being extremely cooperative right now. Fingers crossed he continues. You can see him right back there on the couch. But Sandberg is, as Pam said and as a couple of my fellow school leaders have said, immediately as I stepped foot on campus, not even having all of the people there, the community feel has been absolutely amazing and welcoming. And not only from my fellow school leaders, but the parents, the students and community members that keep coming back to help us with every need and support that we may have. It's been an amazing, I guess, six-week journey so far. And so I'm excited to be here with all of you and tell you a little bit more about Sandberg. So we have 515 students this year, about 33 certificated staff and 17 classified staff. We have 77 English language learners and 68 students with IEPs. We have one Mod Severe classroom. The rest of our students are mild-moderate students served by our three mild-moderate teachers. A few highlights, one of the big things we've been working extremely hard this year at Sandberg is building relationships with our families. And I think that's the biggest cause of amazing attendance rate we've had the first five weeks of the school year. We've had over 99% of our students in attendance. That means they're joining their live Zoom sessions, they're participating in their online learning. And I really bring that back to the staff who's been working so hard to reach every single one of those students and the parents that are truly our partners in education this year. We could not do what any of us are doing without our partners at home supporting their children. And we have, in order to keep those supplies in the hands of our students, we're having bi-weekly distributions of supplies. So every two weeks we have our staff out there making sure we have those paper materials in the hands of our students. We have an amazing Sandberg Foundation. They're continuing to provide student enrichment opportunities through online Zoom enrichment classes, whether it be coding or dance. And also family engagement opportunities where we're really trying to partner parents with other parents to help support one another as they're navigating new unknown things, like we as school leaders are navigating new things and our educators are navigating new things too. So really trying to work together and support one another as fellow parents at Sandberg. And then also a highlight this month in October, we have our character education program and we're celebrating enthusiasm. And so we're going to be having a Sandberg Spirit Days where the students can show their enthusiasm for our amazing school, a spirit week. And then during the October 22nd Distribution Day, we're going to try to turn that into a little bit of a celebration, really celebrating the amazing work our students and our families have been doing the first two weeks, or two months of the school year. What makes us unique at Sandberg, I just mentioned briefly our character education program, which is tied to our POS Club, which stands for Positive Attitudes Will Succeed. So every month we're practicing and talking about important character traits. We really see ourselves not only as teaching our students academics, but really those social skills, they need to be lifelong learners and contributors to society. And so our Positive Attitudes Will Succeed Club is a way to recognize all of our students for the positive attitudes that we, that they have and that contribute to their success as students and learners. Also at Sandberg, we have a brand-new STEAM lab and motor lab that is waiting for our students to come back. We have some amazing materials in there for both our educators and our students and really looking forward to the kids being able to use that upon their return. We're trying to continue our Monday morning meetings, but instead of all gathering around the flagpole, I'm recording a Monday morning video for the students, whether it be reading stories. This morning I got to celebrate all of our students that in the month of September earned the recognition from their teachers for hard work, which was our September character trait. And then I post those on a YouTube channel and the teachers and students and parents are able to see them since we can't gather together at our flagpole like we used to do every Monday morning. And then finally, kind of connecting back to how I started, our community is an integral part of everything we are able to do. And whether that comes from the community-led gardening to help make our campus a beautiful and welcoming space for our students and families, to helping support our parking lot and ensuring our students are safe as they come to school and they depart school. So it truly has been a crazy six weeks, but an amazing six weeks being part, a new part of the Miramasa community and this amazing group of Miramasa leaders.
Thank you Lindsay. Welcome so much.
Thank you.
And let's see, I believe the one elementary that we haven't had yet is Walker Elementary School, Justin Phillips.
This is Darius Ashton. Justin wasn't able to make it this evening due to a family obligation. I can present unless there was somebody else that was arranged to help present for Walker. Toby?
You go ahead.
You go for it. You go for it.
Are you sure? Okay.
I think Deidra, but that's to go for it.
Oh no, Deidra, if you were nominated, I don't want to step, step in if you were ready to go.
I'd love you to do it, Darius.
Okay. This is the kind of partnership we truly have. This is one of the reasons why I love working in the Miramasa community is because we are all so supportive of one another. So I may not be able to answer all of your questions about Walker Elementary School, but I can certainly support Justin in an overview so you all know what wonderful work that he is doing at Walker Elementary and how proud we are all of his dedication to really support Walker and in the community. So he has approximately 500 students in 21 classrooms, 64 staff members, 76 with IEPs, 87 homeless and foster students. If you know Justin, you know his dedication and his heart is truly about students and especially students in need. 137 emerging bilingual students. And another fun bit, I can talk about him since he's not here, is that he has put in a lot of effort himself to become bilingual, including spending many weeks, if not a month, in countries where he is helping himself to learn how to be bilingual to support his students in his school. So very proud of Justin for taking on those types of activities that far extend outside of just typical duties as an administrator at a school site. This is his fifth year at Walker Elementary. And he mentions here in the highlights, his awards in parent and community engagement. That is a central focus for him at all times. And again, cultural responsive teaching and learning, that's always at the heart of what Justin does. Trauma-informed learning, I can speak to that a little bit. That has been a focus of Walker Elementary for several schools, or several years. It isn't something new, but it is something dear to him. I had a vice principal by the name of Barb Waller who had, before she came to me, had the honor of working at Walker. And he really mentored her into her administrative career and trauma-informed and trauma-supportive our students was something that they really focused on together. Barbara has since become a vice principal at our school, is now a principal also within the district. So she was well So she was well-trained and supported by Justin at Walker in her time there. And they really emphasize co-teaching and inclusion. So what makes Walker unique outside of having an amazing leader is 50% emerging bilingual students. A year two with Benchmark, so we're all taking on Benchmark, which is our new reading and language arts. He has been home base for meal distribution since day one in our community. And he has been out there, even when some of the guidelines were skeptical about his participation. He, without fear and with his dedication, clearly was out there handing out food to all the students in our community and families in our community himself, out there with many other workers within our district. He is mission-driven. Early learning is a, I believe, key focus for them. At their school site, they recently had opportunities for young learners at their school. I'm guessing, because I'm not sure if that sentence is complete or if I'm interpreting that correctly. So no questions around that one. I'll probably not pass. He also has more counseling services a day because, again, the social, emotional wellbeing of the students at Walker is a key in his mission and want at that school site. And then this aligns with everything else I've shared about Walker. He has a neighborhood parent center. Justin continues to go above and beyond, in my opinion, in really connecting with the community and really bringing the community in as partners at Walker. So that's my brief overview for Walker in lieu of Justin being here. And he sends his apologies for not being here, but it was a positive note and it was a family obligation that he had to attend this evening.
Thank you.
Of course.
Okay. Well, that, moving on from the elementary school to the middle school, I believe we next have Challenger Middle School on the west side of Miramesa.
That's right.
We welcome Eric Sullivan to Miramesa as the new principal of Challenger.
Good evening, everyone. I'm proud to be the new Challenger principal. I got the, I was honored to get the role in July. I'm not new to Miramesa. I was actually the vice principal at Miramesa High School for the past five years. I always thought that I would end my career at Miramesa High School. I fell in love with the staff members, the people I've worked with. Jeff Savins has been amazing. I always thought it was, he was going to probably kick me out before I was able to step down. But once this opened up, it was Jeff who said, you should go out for this. So I think this was his way of kicking me out of Miramesa, time for me to leave. But anyways, I got the position. It's been an amazing couple of months there. We have 893 students, which is up from our enrollment in the middle of the summer. We have 64-plus staff members. I have an amazing vice principal in Sarah Klein. Our highlights are, we got a new roof this summer, so that's exciting. But the most exciting thing is that we have AC in all our buildings and our teachers are absolutely loving it, the ones that are coming on the campus. We handed out over 500 Chromebooks this school year. We have 100% of our students are connected to Challenger and 594 of our students have perfect attendance this school year. And that number was updated this morning. What makes us unique? We received the Bronze Level of National Healthy School Award. Now, that was a partnership with our nurse, our cafeteria and our PE teachers to make sure our students were really living a healthy and active lifestyle. We got a new elective this year. It's in media arts. This elective allowed us to have low numbers in all of our classes across the board and also give our students an ability to learn how to build new video clips and put together our TV show that we watch called CTV every Monday during our advisory period. Just like all the other schools in Miramesa cluster, we're a huge family involvement. The community is absolutely amazing. They embrace us totally. We've won the California Stinger School Award three times in 2001, 2009 and 2019. We actually won a recycling award and that was a partnership with our custodial staff and teachers to make sure that we have zero waste. We have an amazing garden, or we used to have an amazing garden, where all the fruits and vegetables would go to the cafeteria and they would serve salads for all our staff members and our students on campus. Our band is very, very active. We had one student make the All-State in Band and we had four students make the All-Southern Band Team. And then we have the highest number of students in orchestra in all the district. Well, that's a little about Challenger. Now I'll pass it to Dr. Matt Fallon from Wagenheim.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having us and joining with you all today. I'm Dr. Fallon. I was trying to tally the numbers in my head. I think this is my 11th year at Wagenheim, which is the second half of my career. And I spent my first 10 to 11 years at Miramesa. So I love working in the Miramesa community with the Miramesa families. Wagenheim this year, things are rolling along pretty smoothly, all things considered. We've got about 821 students. We've got about 72 staff, if you count everyone. And I have a really phenomenal vice principal, Susan Kent. This is her second year with us. She, the name may be familiar for some of you. She was a vice principal over at Scripture Ranch High School for a number of years before she then moved to Stanley Middle, and that's where I was able to steal her. So we've set up a really great partnership and I loved having her with me. The other pieces that some of the schools have shared that I didn't add initially, but we have close to 100 students with IEPs and somewhere between 130, 150 students who are English learners. Some highlights, we're in our fourth year of the Laptop Take Home Program, prior to our district going one-to-one for students and laptops, which I think is a great move for us as a district. Wagenheim had done this ourselves, self-sufficiently a couple of years ago. That's one of the reasons that helped make the transition to online learning more smooth for the teachers and students at Wagenheim. Upcoming construction projects, I'm being told are still going to happen, but we're going to have to wait and see. But new roofs for about 70% of the buildings. And even though we already have AC, some of the AC units are from 20 and 30 years ago, so they'll be replaced with the new roofs, which is exciting. We also are slated to receive solar paneling in our parking lot. So it'll look something similar to what you see at Miramesa High School. Additionally, our new security fence, which will run the perimeter of the sidewalk along the main parking lot for Wagenheim is scheduled to be under construction this year. And so it'll provide for us a single point of entry through the main office, which is, will be great. We've been fighting for this and waiting for it for quite a while. Pardon me. A couple of things that make Wagenheim unique. We have flexible course sequencing to allow for more opportunities for advanced coursework. It's not an all-or-nothing type of thing to be an advanced student at Wagenheim. You can be an advanced in some subjects, but not the others. And it's based more on your interest and your proven track record of your academic performance than any single measure. Also, Wagenheim has long stood as a proud claim that we have the largest offering of career technical electives. This includes culinary hospitality careers, construction technology in our woodshop and metal shop, coding and online design, along with video broadcasting. That's in addition to the traditional Spanish ASB yearbook. And then we're one of the few middle schools to have two full-time music teachers. So we have four levels of band, three levels of orchestra, two levels of choir. And so, and then we're able to do that in large part because of the strength of the music program at the elementary and the number of students coming to us who have a passion in continuing their education as young musicians. So again, thank you very much for having us tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have afterwards.
Okay. Well, afterwards, we'll come after we've had a few more, including we've made our way to Miramesa High School. Jeff Savins, you are on.
All right. Thanks, Pam. Thanks, everybody, for hanging with us tonight and listening to all the great work that we're doing in Miramesa. Again, we're very proud. I think a lot of us take pride in growing up in Miramesa. I know Deidre said the same thing, that once you grow up in Miramesa, you just can't leave. I also grew up in Miramesa, started in the community in 1980. And so it's been a real passion to come back to Miramesa and be a part of what's going on in our community. It really is exciting. We have a lot of stuff going on at Miramesa High School. Obviously, the big frustration is that we're not back with our kids to share in all of the things that have happened over the summer. But I just want to share some highlights with you so you know what to expect when our students are able to come back. So the brief overview of our school, we have 2,351 students as of this morning, which makes us the second-largest high school in San Diego Unified. Roughly 228 staff members. My name is Jeff Savins. I'm the principal here. My vice principals are Jason Fowler and Bev Greco. And we will be on the search for a new vice principal. Bev Greco is a retired administrator who's helping us kind of get the year started. And so we'll be in the process of hiring another vice principal about around the end of November. Some of the highlights of Miramesa, we have seven CTE pathways. So just like Dr. Fallon was telling you about and Mr. Sullivan was telling you about, we really value the career technical education programs at Miramesa High School. We were just awarded a grant, a $4 million grant for our auto shop program, which brought in 12 new lifts. We purchased an electric vehicle, so our students will be working on new green tech with electric vehicles. We have a whole new shop essentially. So I would love to share pictures with you, but we're still under construction right now. But we should be able to finish that up, we're hopeful, by the mid-November point and be able to open that up for when we reopen school. So it is very exciting. You guys know we built our culinary facility just a few years ago and that was finalized. The new broadcasting studio, we have a lot of our CTE programs have been completely redone. So we're very excited about the opportunities that those bring for our students. In talking about opportunities and new buildings, if you haven't had an opportunity yet to see the new music building, I really need to organize some sort of a virtual tour for you. That space is absolutely amazing. You guys know Jean Christensen is the band director at Miramesa High School. She was the very first female band director to ever conduct a band in the Rose Parade. First female to ever do that in the history of the Rose Parade, and I believe it's 130 years. So that is pretty amazing. She is now going to be the second female band conductor to bring a band through again, because they were re-invited back for technically this year, but obviously they're not doing it this year. So it was pushed back to 2022. So we're very excited about that. But the only way that we have a successful band is by the feeder programs that we have with our students coming up in music in Miramesa, going to Matt's, Matt's school over there at Wagenheim, or going to Eric's school at Challenger, right? And seeing how much effort is put into those programs and those music programs to keep that alive. So it really is pretty amazing. So again, brand-new music building. We can legitimately put 260 kids with their instruments spaced six feet apart in that music center. So it is a massive, massive space. The floor, the footprint of that room for our band facility is actually larger than the footprint of the gym. So it is a very, very large building. And finally, a building that is worthy and deserving of the effort of our students coming all the way from elementary school all the way into high school. Because as you know, music is not something that is picked up in one year. A lot of our students have been musicians since they were in kindergarten, first grade, and plugging away all the way through. So it really is amazing to see that. We just finished our brand-new math complex. So we built 14 brand-new math classrooms. They come equipped with four outdoor classroom spaces as well, which will lend itself very well in these times to be able to get outside and to stay in the fresh air. So again, very excited about the new math building that just was done. We are in the design development for our large classroom building that is going to go on one of the, kind of near the front lawn of Miramesa High School off of Marauder Way. There'll be a 28-room classroom building that we are designing right now. And then once that goes in, it will lend itself to the elimination of every portable on Miramesa High School's campus. So at that point, all of the portables will be gone. Some of the portables we found in doing all of our research and work with these construction improvements were built in 1944. So I was like, well, during the Second World War, it's probably time we get rid of those things. Who knows what's inside of them? So they are being abated and hauled off and hauled out of there. And we're making way for the kind of the new campus there at Miramesa High School. So once the portables are gone, thankfully, we're going to double the size of that south parking lot. And we're also going to create a drop-off lane in that south parking lot to try to reduce the crazy congestion that exists in the morning on Marauder Way. If you've been traveling down Marauder Way in the morning, you know what I'm talking about. It really is very, very unsafe for our students. So we're trying to intentionally design a drop-off lane in that parking lot that circles the parking lot, but doesn't interact with the parking lot to allow folks to drop off quickly and to keep our students safe. So again, just a quick rundown, we have 23 sports at Miramesa High School. I get questions daily about when are sports reopening? I'll talk about that in the next slide a little bit when we talk about our reopening plan. But as of right now, we are in a holding pattern on all of our extracurricular activities until it is deemed safe for us to open those up. We have plans underway for a sports season to start in December. And so we are moving forward with the hope that that can happen. But again, we're going to wait for experts to weigh in and to determine if that's safe for us to continue. So in addition to our sports, we have over 80 student clubs on campus. This is kind of one of the most fun statistics we have at Miramesa High School. There is absolutely something for everybody. We launched esports this last year, so electronic sports. We're actually going to build a whole facility for our kids with esports, so it's really cool. I got to bring kids into my office and talk to them about the esports program. And one of the kids had a great reaction. He said, "We're going to get jerseys?" And I was like, "Oh, absolutely." And the kid says, "I've never had a jersey in my whole life." And it's like, "Well, here we go." Like, we're going it. And finding those ways, those clubs, those opportunities to connect kids to school, right? And to keep them part of the fabric of Miramesa, that's what it is all about. So I'm really excited to say that we're trying to continue those clubs virtually this year, doing the best we can to keep all of those things alive through the craziness that is COVID. So again, ROTC, as always, they have, they continue to exceed my expectations. Every year, they set a goal of about 2,000 community service hours. Last year, our students, even being cut off in March, logged over 10,000 hours of community service. So our students really do go above and beyond, not asking for anything in return just because it's the right thing to do. And they feel compelled to give back to their community because for most of our kids, this is where they live. This is where they grew up. What makes Miramesa unique to every other cluster in the district is that we really are community-based schools. The Miramesa cluster of schools has the highest retention rate of any cluster in the district. And it's like that because our kids and our community and our parents see what's going on at our schools. They support what's going on at our schools. And it just lends itself to this wonderful partnership because without the support at home from the parents, our schools would not be as high-performing as they are. It really is a true partnership. So very excited. And I put that in the what makes us unique. And it really does. Some of the other schools that I've worked at, I don't want to say the word transient schools, but it's schools where kids are coming in from all different areas into that school. And it's a little bit different feel here at Miramesa. We don't have too many buses that come to Miramesa High School. The 2,351 students that you see enrolled at Miramesa High School live in the cluster, live in Miramesa, and they become a part of Miramesa that way. So I also want to highlight that our students are amazing. Don't be scared of the high school students if they're out there in the neighborhood and they're interacting. They are wonderful kids. When I first came to Miramesa, I questioned the former principal because I came in as the dean of students. I was in charge of the discipline. And I said, "Well, without giant fences, how are we going to keep the kids in? They're going to run out, you know, they're going to be all over the community. They're going to be everywhere." You know, and he goes, "No, they're not. They got to go to third period. They're going to be in third period," right? So, and I found out very quickly that that was accurate. I mean, the kids are really amazing students. So get to know those kids, even if you don't have high school kids. You see them walking around, talk to them. They are phenomenal. We had a group of Miramesa students called the Marauders for Mental Health that came into our staff meeting today and presented to 150 staff members about what they're trying to do with their club and bringing an awareness about mental health during the time of COVID for their fellow classmates. So I share that with you to just say they are really thoughtful young men and women. We are so excited for what they're going to do in the future. We're going to do everything we can during this crazy COVID time to support them and to get them ready to come back to Miramesa in a safe way. So that's the quick overview. I told my colleagues I'd be fast with Miramesa High School. And then if we can transition to the next slide, I'll kind of start us off with where we're at in that transition coming back. So we probably get 50 emails a day around, when are we coming back to school? And I'm just going to let you guys know, just because we see other districts around San Diego Unified reacting in different ways and reopening, doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to see the same from San Diego Unified. Our superintendent Cindy Martin was very specific on saying that we are working in our partnership with UCSD to make sure that we will not return to sites until it is absolutely safe for our students to do that. And when we do that, we're going to return in the safest way possible. My other colleagues will talk to you today about what it looks like at elementary and middle schools. But I can tell you for the second-largest high school in San Diego Unified, it is going to be difficult for us to reopen safely right now at this time, right? One of the issues that we're facing One of the issues that we're facing is not just in the classroom, because some folks are saying, "Well, keep them all in the same classroom." But for a high school, keeping them in the same classroom is very difficult, right? We're not able to switch teachers like that. They have multiple classes that they have to go to. And the real issue is going to be when we have to ring the bell between first and second period, and now we have 2,350 students going to second period. Trying to ensure social distancing and trying to keep kids apart is going to be a heavy lift, to say the least. So we're definitely going to take a look at, how do we do this safely? If you've seen in the news, the other high schools that have opened already, typically they're only open for a short amount of time, and then they're shut down again because of cases of COVID affecting that site. And so we're trying to learn from these experiences and do the best job we can to reopen. So from the high school perspective, I am telling you that we're not looking at an October reopen. It is going to be further down the line, and obviously more information will come. But I do want to guarantee you that when we reopen our schools, we will do it with safety as our number-one priority. And so now I'm going to pass it off to, I believe it's Eric Sullivan, is going to talk to you guys about the middle school launch.
Yeah, thank you, Jeff. We're similar with the high school, where we're going to take our time. We're not going to open in October either, but what we're doing is we're going to make sure we're working very closely with our elementary schools as they will be the first ones opening up. So we're going to learn from them. We've all, we've already had meetings with them. I'm going to be partnering with, or I'm sorry, I'm going to be working with Dr. Fallon and Mr. Sabans at the high school level to make sure that we are working together and opening a plan that is right for not only the students, but the community. So that is the middle school perspective as far as opening up.
All right, and I'm Toby Bates. I'm going to share a little bit quickly as we wrap this up from the elementary phase. And as you might have seen on the news, the magic date for elementary for Phase 1 is October 13th. And what that looks like is not reopening on October 13th. I want to be very clear that that is the start date that we are going to begin what we call Phase 1 Appointment-Based Learning. And again, like Sabans shared, we're working closely, Cindy Martin, our leader, is working closely with all of our scientists, with UCSD, and we are very thrilled to be led with science through this process. We are going to be extremely cautious about the systems we put in place. We are going to be aligned. I know we've met, we're meeting multiple times tomorrow. We're meeting at all seven elementary schools again to talk about what this looks like. But the initial phase for Phase 1, the initial steps are really to go slow, go safe as number-one priority, and be really strategic with that because we want to look at putting plans in place to build on success so that we don't have to do what we've seen on the news, schools opening, and then, uh-oh, we had an outbreak, we got to close down. We want to be really strategic and smart about each decision we make. And so we are going to start small. That is going to be more on an appointment-based model, which is working with site-level leadership to make those decisions. We're going to be starting with doing some in-person testing with all PPE equipment for students and staff, including masks, face shields, gloves, social distancing, all of those things. Our district is working closely, like I shared, with implementing this first phase. We are starting strategically at elementary school because of the fact that they are in one class, in one classroom with one teacher, and looking at that versus how do we manage students to rotate to seven or all these different periods during the day. So we are starting small. We're actually starting with specific targeted students, getting them online, getting them specific targeted interventions. Some of us are starting with just two days a week of helping our kiddos who might have some internet issues, all the way to doing some small-group interventions in person. So more to come on that with Phase 2 and Phase 3 that are coming, but the official first day for us in Mira Mesa at elementary school is Tuesday, October 13th, where we're going to be starting with a super-small group and strategically working with parents. Parents will actually be invited to opt-in or opt-out, and they can opt into that once that's communicated. But obviously, the biggest picture is we want to keep all kids safe. Ideally, we all want to be back on campus. We want to be able to see our students and staff in person, but amidst being safe right now, we're going to do the best we can with what we have, and we're excited to start an elementary with Phase 1. So that concludes us. Our last slide is just to thank you all and this amazing town council for welcoming our public schools. I know I'm going to hand it over to Pam, and she's going to invite the other private schools, but we want to thank you for your commitment to enrolling your child and our community in our Mira Mesa Public Schools. So thank you on behalf of San Diego Unified School District.
Thank you so much, Toby. That was awesome information. I know I saw Ladonna Lambert from Good Shepherd Catholic School here, and there is also Hunter Donahue from Christ the Cornerstone Academy. Is Hunter here? I'm not sure. Christ the Cornerstone? Okay, in that case, Ladonna Lambert from Good Shepherd. I see you.
Yes. Hello. As Pam said, my name's Ladonna Lambert, and I'm principal at Good Shepherd. I've been there seven years, but 15 years as a principal and 30 years in education. So I'm a transplant to Mira Mesa, only been at the school for seven years. And just want to give you a little bit of statistics about our school. I do have a full-time vice principal. Our enrollment did drop, obviously, because we're tuition-based. We have only 230 students, and that is from, I have an infant program all the way to eighth grade. So that's our statistics. I have 33 faculty and staff, and I have a part-time learning support person because we have about 20 students with ISPs. So that's the statistics on them. With some highlights I'd like to talk about is on March 13th, when we all went out, our teachers were teaching on March 16th. So we didn't stop at any time, and it was difficult. So we've learned a lot along the way. So the other things I want to say is that we do have very supportive parents, and some of you've talked about Mira Mesa and about the community, and it's amazing coming into the school seven years and seeing that community. It's phenomenal. You know, there is something about Mira Mesa. So it's a wonderful place to work. What's different about us is we are in school. We've been in school for a month. Lot of challenges, reopening the school, working with the parents, making sure all the children are safe. Since we're a smaller school, we have the flexibility of moving, we move classes around and, you know, to make sure we follow all the local and state guidelines. Knock on wood, everybody's been very healthy. It's been very interesting trying to teach kindergartners to stay social distancing, but it is amazing. So it really is to watch them have their mask on all the time, to make sure that they're washing their hands all the time. Since we are a one-to-one this year device, it's made life a lot easier. Our other issues we have with the students that are in school, we have a good population of our students out in distance learning. So our teachers are doing an incredible job with the high-flex model. So as they are teaching in-school learners, they're having to Zoom with the students that are home. And it is challenging the first couple of weeks and to be able to make sure that they're meeting the needs of all their students, but I am very proud of all of my staff and how well they are doing with the both, those ones that are in school and out. We do offer art, Spanish, music, computers, PE, STEAM, and academic decathlon. You know, all of those are nice enough that some of our teachers volunteer for those extra positions. One thing is unique that I said is that we do have an infant toddler program. I opened it last year because I had the year before five teachers that were pregnant. And so I really appreciate all my staff, and so it was nice to have them where they could bring their children to work in a safe environment and be able to go and do their jobs still because they still needed to work. So it's growing. Our biggest hit this year for students was our preschool program. You know, a lot of families are still keeping their little ones at home, and even in our TK program, so we lost a few there. It's also very challenging to have in the junior high where the students stay within their cohorts and the teachers have to rotate. So there's, they do have eight teachers, but the teachers are ones that are having to move into the classroom so the students can stay, you know, within their class cohort. And I think that's about it. It's been great to be, I know it's hard because I'm not a big school, but it actually is wonderful to see the kids play, and it's nice to have them back on campus. And I tell you, I have to do yard duty all the time because we're so short-staffed, and it's great to see them being able to just run. But they run with their mask on, but they run. And so, you know, we have spots where they take their mask off and, you know, take a break, but it is nice to hear the laughter and the joy. You know, it's one thing you miss when you've been in elementary school, you know, your whole life is hearing the kids. So I, you know, I wish you all the best on reopening because that was the toughest thing to do. And the plans changed when we thought we had it all together, then we went back into distance learning, and then we've got out of distance learning. So it's rough. It took a lot to get parents to buy into the program, and it's like every week we get five more kids coming back. And so we're slowly starting to get our population back into the classroom, which we all know that distance learning isn't the answer, but, you know, it's kind of hard, you know, them sitting across from you, but you really can't work closely with them. So, you know, it's got its challenges also. So that's about it with Good Shepherd.
Ladonna, thank you so much, and that is very interesting to hear about the kids being back and the laughter. I agree. I think it's something we all appreciate. Is Christ the Cornerstone Academy here? It's possible he may not have made it tonight. So that concludes our individual presentations. Round of applause for all of our principals. Totally amazing. We've run a little bit late, so we don't have a lot of time for questions, but we did want to take a few questions for any or all, so.
I have one that came in on Facebook Live for Jeff Sabans, asking when the buildings and the parking lot will be done. Oh, so Phase 2 is starting right now. So we are going into design. We are hoping to break ground in about one year's time from now, and the project itself is going to take, they're telling me 12 months, so let's say 18 months. So I'd assume probably two and a half years start to finish before we have our brand-new building open and our parking lot redone.
Excellent. Is that the last of our questions, Jeff?
I don't see anything in chat, so yes.
Okay. I'd like to thank all the principals who are here tonight to inform the community of your schools, the reopening plans, construction plans. Always wonderful to hear, and I'll just second all the great comments about Mira Mesa Schools and our schools are so much to be proud of. Our community stays with their schools. It's very rare to have someone looking for a transfer out of a Mira Mesa-area school, and that starts with our principals. So thank you very much for creating the wonderful academic environment we have here in Mira Mesa. All right, we are going to jump in now. We're going to have the second half of our candidate for mayor. Barbara Bree, council member from District 1, is here, and we're going to ask Barbara to speak to us for a few minutes and take a couple of questions.
Great. Well, first of all, thank you for inviting me tonight. I got to listen to a lot of the school presentations, and it really gave me a sense of the community of Mira Mesa and, you know, how you all are so cohesive and work together so well. So I'm Barbara Bree. I'm running for mayor. I currently represent District 1 on the San Diego City Council. And prior to running for city council in 2016, I was a small-business owner in the technology world, and I ran for council because I was frustrated that the street in front of my office was being torn up yet again to have the same work done. Perhaps you've had the same frustration. And I got to City Hall, and quite frankly, I found a place where there's no accountability, no transparency, and major decisions are made behind closed doors. And I stood up to it immediately. And I'm running for mayor to bring a customer-service culture to City Hall, a culture that puts our residents and our neighborhoods first. And there are a few differences between my opponent and me. First of all, he, I believe in local control of land use, and he has supported state legislation that would eliminate local control of land use and also eliminate single-family zoning. And just last week, you saw the San Diego City Council vote unanimously to support the Three Roots Project, which you all had worked on for a few years with the developers to get the community benefits that you should get in exchange for accepting the density. If state legislation, like my opponent, would pass, you would not have that leverage with developers. And I believe that San Diegans should be in charge of deciding what gets built in our neighborhoods. Second, my first priority as mayor is to lead an economic recovery, which is the only way we're going to have the money to pay our bills. That's why I believe my private-sector experience, starting companies, creating jobs, is really important at this moment in time, particularly the fact that I come out of the high-tech and biotech worlds, which not only continued working during the pandemic but growing. And these worlds, which are located very close to you and probably many residents in Mira Mesa work, you know, in Serena Valley at high-tech and biotech companies, is truly the future of our city. And third, I want to bring fiscal discipline to our city, and I'm going to make sure we don't have any more real estate deals like 101 Ash Street, which my opponent enthusiastically supported when he was on the city council, which was before I joined. So I'm here tonight also. I really want to hear from you about what your issues and concerns are and what you want the next mayor to focus on.
Anyone has questions for the council member? Go ahead and put them in chat. If you're with us on Facebook, go ahead and post your questions there. Jeff will pick those up.
You know, it's not on Facebook yet, but the first question we almost always get is the condition of the streets and what you're going to do about it.
Yes, and I remember when you all testified over the phone about the condition of Gold Coast Drive. So I remember that very well. I think it's on the list for the next group of streets to be redone because I've just looked through the list of things that were going to be happening in my council district, but I've been told that it is really in a state of bad repair and that it really needs to be redone. That slurry seal is not enough. And honestly, I hear about infrastructure everywhere I go in the city, and part of what concerns me is that when we have the work done, it's not at a good quality, so it doesn't last, and that's something that needs to change. So if the city's going to pay for work, which is really you're paying for work because it's your taxpayer money, it needs to be done at a high quality.
So I don't actually see any questions in chat right now. Does anyone else have a question for Barbara?
Yeah. Can I?
I see Pam does.
Yeah, I was trying to put it in chat. Barbara, Mira Mesa has a currently empty former team center, the Epicenter, long history. Are you familiar with that, and what ideas would you have for helping a community that is in need of reviving something that is not being used right now?
Well, Pam, thank you. I did not know about this. So is this a building that the city owns?
Yeah.
Great. So it's an empty building that the city owns in Mira Mesa that could be used, is a community asset that needs to be used for something?
It has a long history, Barbara. Many years ago, it was our original library when the community first developed. When our permanent library was built, the community voted to use that as a team center, which we did for many years. That lease was canceled in 2014 when the nonprofit who was operating it could no longer afford to keep running the building. We learned at that time that there was an incredible amount of deferred maintenance. The city eventually put out an RFP, and our community foundation was making a bid on that. We unfortunately were told just two weeks or so before the bids were due, got one of those last-minute surprises where they let us know that for a building estimated to be worth 4.3 million, they were estimating it- they were estimating it needed 3.1 million in deferred maintenance and repairs. And that would be incumbent upon the lessor to make those repairs. So of course, our partner in that bid backed out when they saw those numbers. And it's currently still sitting vacant. The property is under the management of real estate assets. And they're doing some work on it now, but it's being vandalized at the same time. So it's become quite a nice work.
So this is the first time I've heard of it. My approach to an issue like that would be to work with the community and real estate assets to see if the building really, really did need that kind of money and what we can do with, with the building so that it's a benefit to you. This is a building in your community that you, has been paid for with your taxpayer money that should be providing you all with some benefits. Could you give me the, the address? Because actually in the next few weeks, I'll drive by. I'd like to see it.
It's right across the parking lot from the senior center.
Oh, okay. I know where it is because I've been to the senior centers a few times. Okay.
We think it would make a very fine community center since Miramesa with almost 80,000 people has never had a community center.
Well, it would make sense because the senior center is right there.
Yeah.
Yes.
You would have both. And you also have a parking lot right there. On Miramesa Boulevard. So it's very centrally located. It's on public transit.
It is.
Yeah. Well, what I've seen at the city is there's sort of a culture of no. It's no, we can't do it that way. We've always done it that way, this way. And it's a culture of no. It's not a culture of yes. And, you know, I come out of the entrepreneurial world where you get told no over and over again. And no is only a way station to yes. So I think this is something we can figure out how to make work for the community.
Good.
Any additional questions? Okay. Barbara, thank you so much for coming out tonight and letting us hear from you and ask a few questions.
Thank you. Thank you all. I'm going to just hang out for a little while if you're still continuing. So.
Here we are. And if anyone has additional questions, they can put it in chat for you. Okay, we're going to move on. I've noticed we have two representatives here from our elected officials. We'll go ahead and start Councilmember Kate's office. Luis Polares here.
Hey Barry, how's it going?
All right.
Wanted to thank you guys. A couple of weeks ago, we, we requested that we get your assistance to help reopen our libraries and our playgrounds in the city. And as a result, both of those have been reopened. The Miramesa Library is one of that first group to reopen. And then all playgrounds did reopen as of this weekend. So want to thank for your guys' help. I know that the Miramesa Library is an important asset. If it wasn't for the pandemic, we'd be there right now. So it's good to see that both those places are back. And another note, we also issued a memorandum along with Councilmember Ward requesting to expand our parks to have other uses in addition to non-fitness. I'm not sure if you saw a copy of that memo. If not, I can forward it to you to show to the town council.
All right. Anyone have questions for Luis? No? I think that's good for now. Thanks, Luis. And joining us tonight is
Appreciate that.
Rob Newsen from Assemblyman.
Actually, I didn't go back to Luis for a second. Maybe we should send the Gold Coast Parkdale question.
Oh, okay. Where do we stand on the, the bonds for Gold Coast? My understanding is that everything has passed. We're just waiting on some bond sales?
Pretty much, yeah. I did get an actual update about this from Public Works about a week ago. So that, I'm not sure if you saw that update that we put up on Nextdoor last week. So basically, we're just waiting for that final round of funding to get issued and then we can move ahead with the project. Public Works staff already had kind of their blueprint on what to do for the construction in terms of the timeline and the layout. We need to get the, the actual funding issued in that next round and then we can actually begin the project. So we're waiting as much as you guys are. I know everyone's been kind of patient about this. But hopefully, we can have that bound, round of bond issuance come out in the next couple of weeks and we'll be able to move on with this project.
Good.
I think Alexa had a question.
Saw that about the.
Sorry, go ahead. Question about the surveys for the, for all the housing, if you had results back yet? Luis?
I can find that information.
You cut out. I didn't hear you.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
I don't have that information offhand, but I could take a look and find that for you.
Okay.
I can probably answer that. The planning department said they needed a couple of months to work through it and figure out what it actually meant. So they're supposed to come back with the results at the community plan update meeting. There won't be one in October. That'll be in the third Monday in November. When we, when we'll have that.
All right, thank you.
And then I saw a question from Deidre regarding that Flanders crosswalk. When I go back to the office tomorrow, let me give a call over to Transgressions. Or if they have a project.
All right, thank you.
Oh, before, before you got here, Luis, Deidre was asking about the Sock Park. You know what the schedule is?
I guess I got some homework now for both of those things. Let me ask Public Works for the same question, though. I know that they give Joe a regular update about our park projects. I'm sure I can find that information pretty quickly.
Yeah, he wasn't happy with their last answer, which was towards the end of the, the middle of next year.
I'll find out tomorrow when I go back as well. What's that?
It's been over six years, Luis. My kids still don't have a place to play.
We're excited about that, too. We need to get that thing done.
Yeah.
Okay, so Luis is going to get some answers for us. And we can get those out to you, especially you, Deidre, as soon as they come in. All right, we're going to jump back now to Rob. Hi, Rob.
Hello, welcome. Good, good evening. So I, I gotta go back to Principal Hartson's comment. Yeah, once you go to Miramesa or have lived in Miramesa, you never really leave. And it was really neat to go down memory lane of knowing all my friends, you know, the elementary schools that they went to and how it's changed. So it's always nice to come back home. Miramesa will always be my home, even though I live up the, up the freeway just a few minutes. I can always be back in Miramesa in about 10 minutes. But let me just give a couple of quick updates. So, oh, we currently, right now, we have 16,500 firefighters fighting 23 major fires in California. Majority of those that are taking place right now are up in Northern California. On Saturday alone, we responded to 27 new wildfires. The good news about those that took place on Saturday, we're able to get those fully contained. And they're no, no longer a problem for the community and the state. Total to date, as of this year, we've had 8,200 wildfires. They have burned over 4 million acres. We've had 31 fatalities from fires. 8,454 structures have been lost to date. We have some good news, you know, for the state. Temperatures, as we all know, are a little warmer than normal, but we have a cooling trend taking place this week. So we'll get back to more normal seasonal temperatures here in the next five to seven days. So that's good news for us. The two closest firefighter fires that, that I'll report on that are Riverside and San Bernardino. I saw, I know many people have seen smoke and, and whatnot. If you're along the I-15, you're looking north over Palomar Mountain and whatnot. So 95% of the Riverside end, we are at 93% containment for the San Bernardino fire. So for the most part, Southern California is, you know, we're, our, our fires have, have been contained. And, you know, we are, you know, busy doing the recovery on that. Lastly, I'll, I'll kind of talk to you about when the pandemic hit. Your assembly member reallocated 95% of our staff up in the, in our, in our state office in Sacramento, allocated all but one person to me in the district office so that we could prioritize folks during the huge layoffs. As, as we all know, we have friends and family members that have lost their jobs. EDD has been front and center in our office every day since the pandemic hit, trying to help people get their documents filed, get their online accounts set up. I even called employers on behalf of folks whose social security numbers unfortunately were misreported. We have, and, you know, we, we've done a lot of work in, in trying to help out Miramesa. The community of Miramesa unfortunately was not exempt from this. I've helped a lot of folks, friends and family members in Miramesa with their EDD claims. I will put in the chat my email address. We are still working remotely, only sending one person in the office per day. We have a small district office. Some of you have, have visited us. So we are still, again, working remotely. The easiest way to get ahold of me is via email. And I will call you back. Or if you want to refer my email to any friend or family member who's experiencing any sort of EDD situation, please, please, please don't hesitate. I'm a resource. And I actually get to put on, I'm an EDD expert now. So not something that I planned to do. It's something that happened. And if you know Assemblymember Mainshine, we always step up to the situation. And we have always put communities first ever since his time on the San Diego City Council. I'm still with him after all these years because that's his, his, it's, it's just how we prioritize things in public service. So with that, again, I'll leave my, I'll leave the office number in the chat along with my email address. Please share it with anyone and everyone who might be experiencing any, any sort of EDD issue or hiccup. And I will do my very best to follow up with them either the same day or within 24 hours. We've got a lot of great people in our office that are doing a lot of great work and, and trying to do the very best to get people back to somewhat whole again. So please hang in there. And anything I can do to help, please let me know. Thank you.
I have one, one question for Rob. Actually, Barbara mentioned this earlier, but there've been a, there's been a bunch of legislation at this state level to try to impose high-density housing on communities to basically eliminate single-family zoning and build multifamily housing in them and completely override seek or local control. Now, most of these bills died last year, but I expect they'll be back. What, what does Brian think of that kind of legislation?
I, I tell you what, that, that, that's a, thank you, Steve. So he, he was your council member for eight years. He understands the need for local control. He does not, we, we have a number of golf courses in our district that aren't in Miramesa. But we have one in Carmel Mountain Ranch right now. We have another in, over in Rancho Peniskitos by the old Doubletree. And then there's the Stonebridge facility over in the city of Poway. And those residents will be voting on that one. But from the get-go, the assembly member supports and local control. And I've told this to all the residents in Carmel Mountain Ranch, even though the assembly member was resident of Carmel Mountain Ranch. You know, we don't feel Sacramento should be making local land use decisions in San Diego. San Diego needs to be making those decisions.
Good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Rob. Good to see you tonight. Okay. All right. I believe we've gotten through all of our elected officials. If there's anyone out there I missed, please speak up. Okay. Hearing none. We usually have a couple of reports from organizations. Pam, do you have anything from Peniskitos Canyon or the library for us?
Sure. Nothing from Peniskitos Canyon because Citizens Advisory Committee has not quite gotten into doing the Zoom meetings yet. But we, we may well, as the fall progresses. However, on behalf of the library, as has, was mentioned, the Miramesa Branch Library is one of the first wave of libraries that you can actually go in the doors of now. And library hours at all libraries in San Diego have expanded to include Saturdays. So even the ones that you can't go in, such as the one where I work in University City and Governor Bride, that have the contact free pickup, that takes place Monday through Saturday, 9:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. So you can make a hold and you can go and pick it up. At Miramesa, walking in the door, it's not full service. You can't walk back into the stacks and wander up and down and choose something. But you can go in and use the computers. You can go to the reference desk and get assistance. If you want to get something and you don't know quite what it is that you want, the librarian can help. And a staff member will go and bring it back. And you can check out your holds yourself. So it is a start. As the educators were saying, it's limited capacity within the building because we don't want to have to go back. And that's why it's just that the first wave of libraries that were among the first ones that did the contact free pickup. I believe the figure is 25% of the building's capacity, which is actually one tier more restrictive than what we're currently at right now because we really don't want to have to go backwards. One other thing, too, all libraries are closed between 1:00 p.m. and 2:00 p.m. That's a time when staff members can make sure that the additional cleaning gets done and all the staff gets their lunch breaks so that they can serve you the better all the rest of the time. So everyone's very excited about being able to offer that. A lot of virtual services are going on from the library, too. I personally am very hooked on a 3:00 p.m. tea with a branch manager who reads stories for adults. We just finished listening and reading along to the Count of Monte Cristo a couple of weeks ago, which is not something I would have tackled reading all by myself, but it makes a nice afternoon break hearing a chapter at a time and reading along. And this month, we're doing Dracula. So Christina Wainwright, who's the Pacific Beach Library Branch Manager, is doing this. There are a ton of things for kids out there. There's a program, The Science of Harry Potter, that's coming up. Just go to sandiegolibrary.org, the overall library website, or look at for the Miramesa Library Facebook. Finally, the part that I'm the most involved with at the Miramesa Library, our band book club has chosen our titles. We're going to be talking about for the coming year. October, we are doing the Stories of Edgar Allan Poe. And you don't have to read any particular story collection, but choose a story or stories either off the internet or check out a collection of stories. And the Miramesa Library has some on hold for the book club. You can call up and reserve that. Join us the last Tuesday of the month, which I believe is the 27th at 6:30 p.m. via Zoom. And we will talk some Poe.
Excellent. Thanks, Pam. All right. Any of our committee members have a report?
I can do it for planning group.
That would be good.
All right. So two weeks from today, we will have our, our planning group meeting. I've asked both mayoral candidates to come to that one. We'll have a little more time than they had tonight. I expect them to take about 15 minutes. And I asked them to specifically address planning issues. So that'll be a chance to see, hear them talk about some things that you may not hear in, in other, other places. And it gives us a chance to ask them some questions that they may not get in, in other places. Other than that, the planning for Carroll Canyon is, is moving forward. We've been working on those projects for a long time. Three Roots, we approved last year and it got approval from city council just this last week. Planning group thought that was a very good project in a lot of, in a lot of ways. And it should start construction positive. And it should start construction possibly as early as November. The other one, the eastern end of Carroll Canyon, is the Stone Creek Project. We've been reviewing their design for a long time. That one won't start construction for another decade. But we, they did come up with a very good master plan and we approved the master plan for that. So the nice thing about Carroll Canyon is it's a, you know, it's a big, highly disturbed area and it's basically a blank slate for them to do whatever they want with it. And so they gave their architects some room to be creative and they came up with some some good designs. This Three Roots project will have a new community park in it. They'll replace the one that we lost by Challenger to Vernal Pools. That one will also build Carroll Canyon Road from 805 to Camino Ruiz. And then eventually with Stone Creek, that one will go all the way to I-15. Community plan update is proceeding. That one has been going a little less smoothly, I would say, although we did have a, one meeting on new trails in the community that everyone was very happy with. There are some nice trails planned, including a trail that will basically extend the trail along the south end of Lopez Ridge. It'll take it all the way from Camino Santa Fe all the way down into Penasquidos Canyon. So there's some good things happening there. The survey was mentioned earlier. The planning department put out the survey with some options for different types of housing in different places. There were a lot of complaints about that survey, the way it was structured and you know, it just didn't work particularly well. But ultimately, people figured out how to take it and they got, I think at last count, some 700 responses. So we'll see what that looks like next month. What questions for me? All right.
All right. Thanks, Jeff. Conchen? Are you still welcoming submissions for your column?
Yes, of course. So in the newsletter, we have started a positive thought section and it's open for everyone, whoever wants to send a few sentences of positive thoughts of your own to inspire others, to motivate others. They are welcome to do it. And anyone can participate. So if you want, you can submit your picture as well, if you if you prefer to do that, but that's not mandatory. So so we are welcoming a positive thought section in our newsletter. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I think that's the end of any reports that we have. Does anyone else have important questions before we call it an evening? Okay. Well, I want to thank everyone who attended tonight. It was good to hear about all the schools. We were glad to see our mayoral candidates come in and spend a few minutes with us. We appreciate you being here. We're welcome to come back next month. We'll be putting together a lot of interesting topics for you in November. Thank you. Good night.
Good night, everyone.
8:57 p.m.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night. I finally got to say something.